Evening and welcome to the Committee of the Hall for the Town of Annapolis Royal June Board. We'll start it, it's just six P M now. Begin as we have members of the public present to give the live stream notice. So today's meeting is being streamed live on the Town of Annapolis Royal YouTube channel. To those present in the gallery today, by attending a public meeting of the council, you are consenting to having your image, voice and comments recorded. Anyone who is invited to speak will be recorded and their voice, image and comments will form part of the live stream. The Chair and or the C A O have the discretion and authority at any time to direct the termination or interruption of live streaming. Such direction will only be given in exceptional circumstances when deemed relevant. Move on to the, we have no regrets or absence, the entire council is here. We have a couple of additions to the agenda.
So the first addition of the agenda is under new business, there'll be our new number two and it's heat pumps for capital purchase. And then all the others from there will go down. And under section fourteen in camera, uh, business item number six will be plan to buy, sell or lease.
Then the do will occur the agenda. Are there any conflict of interest issues? Right, has everyone had a chance to look at the committee of the whole minutes from May seventh? Yes, any comments or corrections? Then we'll consider those also adopted. Uh, there are no presentations tonight. And any public input, no public input, then they'll write into new business. So our first business is request for decisions sewage, lagoon, window baffle. Um, so may I have a motion?
So approves the purchase of a window baffle to address disinfection issues at the sewage treatment plant up to a maximum of thirty five thousand dollars, including H S T. And to amend the capital budget twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six up to the amount of thirty five thousand dollars.
So open the floor for discussion on this topic.
I'll second that. And yes, I have a question. Because of the monitoring device that was proposed. And I now see the heat pump installation, so my question is, those are true things, what should be happening in what sequence and what should be happening together?
Yeah, so we've got the baffle for your recommendation to see if you were interested in virtue cena. So staff had in the budget for a sewage treatment indicator, what was it called?
Uh, there're light sensors that measure the output of the U V bulbs, which do the disinfection and then a U V T meter, which just measures the clarity of the water, which in turn tells you how effective the lights can be cloudy waters part of the different.
So those were in our operating budget that we thought we needed at the time because we were having some um, monitoring issues with the sewage treatment plant and we thought those were what we needed to move forward. Under further investigation, Ken has been working with the engineers and now they're posing that we have this baffle, so because it is over the amount of a regular operating purchase, we have to amend the capital budget if we're moving forward with the capital.
And I have no problem with the baffle, none at all.
Yeah.
Uh, and you did answer my question, the U V T meter would be done next year. But now there's the third thing that is the heat pumps that I was nowhere else before the meeting.
Yeah, so that will be the topic.
Yes, but I'm just, uh, I guess my concern is that U V T meters are what tell you there's a problem.
They 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 tell you how effectively the system is working, how much light is being put out and how effective that light's going to be in disinfection in the process. So they're, they are absolutely diagnostic tools. Um, when we look at the the baffle itself, that's going to solve a problem for us. So and and speaking to what you're you're talking about, so uh, if I'm choosing, because there is no real need to do everything in one fiscal. So I suggest you're pushing off the light sensors and the U V T to next fiscal. Um, attacking the problem more aggressively now uh, with the baffle, see how effective that is. And then I think we might even be able to phase in those other items over multiple fiscals if we can see that we've successfully addressed them.
Okay, but we still have the money in the regular operating budget for those items.
Yeah.
So they could be purchased without amending any budget.
Right, right. And this has nothing to do with the heat pumps, okay, great, thank you, that was my problem.
Um, I have a question, are you asking a question, sorry, okay, um. In the original diagrams, there was no baffle, flow around baffle, blow through window baffle. And they've recommended the blow through baffle, but only one.
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask my question first? Okay, so if you only have one baffle and the way you see the flow with two is that um, with two baffles, you would have less pressure hitting each baffle, correct? I'm just wondering if one baffle would have all that water pressure on it because and then the flow around has that same sort of effect where the water is not, is that high pressure where where it hits? Because it's it's being rounded around the baffles.
Yeah, I I don't think increasing the number of baffles i- is going to reduce the pressure in any one baffle at a given time. But increasing the baffle certainly increases the distance the wastewater is traveling.
Yeah.
And that gives more time for somebody, it's just like the switchbacks event, right? More switchbacks, the longer you're lying to get to the teller.
Right.
The reason why only one is proposed, I think just relates to the degree of the issue that we're having. It's not a constant issue, it's more of a high flow issue.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying that this would keep, this might not slow the flow enough with one baffle. So here in this diagram, it's got the water flow, is that what it's showing here?
It is.
So it has a water flow going in a curve.
Yes.
Right, so with one baffle, does that mean you have, there's one opening on one side of the baffle that everything has to flow through?
There's there's different types, but so for the window baffle itself, so like you could have a baffle that let's say it went two thirds of the way across the lagoon and just stopped. And then let that final portion open, right, so.
So that's more of a flow rate.
The water would come in, it would just flow around, but the window baffle, the entire lagoon is covered and then there is simply an opening in the baffle, right? So so the wastewater will come to it, just like the wall with the and so the wastewater would come to it and then what is intended to happen i- is that the the solids in the water would hit the baffle and they're going to drop down the curtain and then the water is just going to flow through the window, so it's going to reduce the flow through, there will be pressure on it. But obviously within design parameters. Um, but it's because it's just a window and it not like just a partial baffle, that that is deemed sufficient based on our flows um, and lagoon, so I mean, when we're talking about our flows, right now they're low flows, we're not having an issue, but we're talking about forty five gallons a minute. So when you're looking at a big lagoon, i- it's not as if you were to drop um, a piece of charcoal lagoon, you would see it whipping down to the other end, it's much slower than that.
Okay.
But yeah, so it it's meant to, it's it's heavy fabric, it's it's um, it's secure to the ground, so it really well within design parameters in terms of pressure on it.
Okay, because part of the U V not working could have been because of the flow.
What happened was the disinfection wasn't effective, we had disinfection. But it wasn't as effective as it should have been because it was higher flows um, due to spring melts, frozen ground.
Don't have the height of the flow, the height of the flow.
The volume, so they was like, so where we were seeing the issue is when we had those up over a hundred gallons per minute. Then we weren't getting complete disinfection because it was it was carrying a lot of solids in the flow. They they weren't, yeah, they weren't spending enough time in the lagoon for them to settle out. So when it's slower, the solids fall out of it, they collect on the bottom and then you get cleaner water passing through the channel to the U V lights.
So do the engineers have any measurement of success of of the one, one flow through window baffle? Is there kind of be a measure of success for that one?
Or our success criteria is going to be complete disinfection within standard compliance standards in in all typical conditions, there will exist a set of conditions that may occur at some point where we still have overflow or our systems overwhelmed, that's true of any system. But by and large, looking at our historical data, and then we we record the flows every single day. And all of that was provided to the engineer, so looking at our typical flows for a given year and our system designs, this window baffle should, you know, predict, you know, should give us complete this in all normal conditions.
Okay, thank you.
That was a problem I had was understanding the flow around the baffle to the flow through the window baffle.
Yeah.
And other questions? Should we reiterate the motion just for the sake of clarity?
I move that council approves the purchase of a window baffle to address disinfection issues at the sewage treatment plant up to a maximum of thirty five thousand dollars, including H S T and to amend the capital budget twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six up to the amount of thirty five thousand dollars.
Second, please. All in favor?
Uh, I now must say. So with this, after we do the heat pump conversation, then we're gonna, Melanie is going to walk us through amending the capital budget for both units if that's what is agreed upon. And we're also going to include our intact grant that we got created two hundred thousand. So it's going, she's going to amend the capital budget after the next meeting.
So um, the second item of new business is heat pumps for capital purchase. So we don't have a motion for that one yet, right, we have to discuss it.
There is a motion, but so the the background on this one before we go into the motion, in case you don't want to make the motion, um, is that we had included in our operating budget five thousand dollars for heat pumps for town hall building that was upstairs, so that was approved. Um, under our procurement policy, we went out and got three quotes and the quotes did not come in within the five hundred dollars. So the new quotes for the heat pumps is seven thousand four something.
Eighty four, ninety.
Eighty four, forty nine, eighty four, including it has to. Yes, so because of the expense being over the amount that qualifies for operating budget, we're looking to see if you want to put the expense through, if you want to move forward with the heat pumps for upstairs. And if we do, then that would be a capital purchase as well.
Is this as a result of tariffs?
No.
Okay.
Just the
They just related indicate.
And who's installation, that's right. Yeah, and the ten years, um, part of this labor, yeah. And we had the three quotes.
I'll move to recommend to council to amend capital budget twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Request for the purpose, or heat purchase of a Fujitsu, Juzo, Duckless, split outdoor heat pump in the amount of eight thousand four ninety nine point eighty four, including H S T for town hall.
I'll send them up. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh, I now must say Karen. And so now we'll get Melanie to go over the capital budget until I think she's got her share of screen.
I'm gonna share it if I can just get it dragged over here so you can see it, because you can't see it, right?
Can we see it?
Oh, you can, okay, so it's over here, okay, so um, so I've added the thirty five thousand for the baffle and I've added eighty five hundred for the um, town hall heat pump. I've also included the intact since we're amending the budget, we know we've got the money. So before the town share of the um, L L C A overall, overall project was a hundred and seventy seven, three forty and you had this motion here. But I've removed that because to make it balance now, you only need the seventy seven, nine, twenty four in kind. So our tap, our budget previous to this was one million, three, three, seven, six, two, seven, now it's one million, three, eight, one, one, twenty seven. Grants of one million, one, seven, 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 one, five. The town share previously was two fifty nine, three, twenty eight, now it's one twenty five, four, eighty eight. We've got our L L C A grant, our gas tax money we'll use for the Wi Fi, the intact of two hundred thousand, the E A F of fifty six, six, twenty seven and the F R I P of twenty nine, eight, eight.
But the two hundred thousand is under publication ban, right, until it's the intact insurance grant, right?
So we could just say, we could just say grant.
Right, because I don't think we're allowed to disclose it until, yeah.
I will tell me asked for.
About two hundred thousand, the maximum. Right? It's good news on the budget, right?
Absolutely, so you're adding forty three, five. Um, but you've removed, you've reduced to a hundred and seventy seven, three, forty, so overall um, for the town, what the town was going to pay.
Right?
So that'll be more money that we get to keep in the uh, general capital bank.
So we need a motion, Melanie, you can help us.
Yeah, so I did send Kim a a draft motion. Basically, it'll just be to amend the uh, general capital budget for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six to one million, three hundred and eighty one dollars and one twenty seven.
I'll move that.
Second, please.
I'll second that.
And further discussion? All in favor?
I now must say Karen, because that was a lot easier.
Nice job.
Thank you, so well done, so we'll move on to the water operating budget. You can introduction one.
Uh, that's Melanie's, yeah.
All, do you want to give a?
So can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is this is the proposed twenty twenty five to twenty twenty, twenty eight um, three year water utility budget. We're only committed to year one, but for the U A R B, we have to present a three year budget. So for the most part, uh, meter sales are flat. Really no growth per se in the um sales, metered sales. Our main source of supply is our inventory, I assume that's going to stay flat. Um, our fee that we pay for the water that we buy from the county, I've got at a hundred and ten. And for the most part, um, nothing's jumping out at me, I did beef up the uh, training, the public works training expense to get a second person trained on the water, the uh, water tests. And the 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 accounts that you see highlighted in yellow, they are thirty five percent of the hundred percent that's in the town operating budget, so they'd be heat and lights for this building, um, the truck expense, insurance and things like that. Um, last year, we did have a little teeny tiny bit of uh w- w- water storage tower cost, I've taken that out, we don't anticipate that this year. I put a thousand dollars in for scata water treatment monitoring. Um, and I went over this with uh, Sandy and Ken. I've got a five year, I've got fifteen thousand. I put fifteen thousand, we haven't gone to tender for this yet, but it's five thousand dollars a year for a water rate study. And depreciation, and this is our last year of our C M H C principal and interest debt that will be paid off. Um, actually, I think it's paid off now, just got paid off last month. So the water utility will carry no debt in the in the future years. It's a deficit of sixty five thousand dollars. Uh, we've had a deficit this, the year that just ended of fifty five thousand. Um, and so we've needed to do a water rate study for a couple of years.
Um, on account zero two, two, one, five hundred. When it says share of operational maintenance cost, well feel, it's not clear, like I find it's just not clear that that's the money we're paying the county. I would just wonder if there was a another way of showing that.
We could certainly change that, um, that was changed when your husband was a counselor. That's what he wanted it called, so we can certainly change it.
Oh.
Yeah, because I would I would never have guessed that that's what it was based on the title.
And I was looking for it, yeah, anywhere it was. I'm embarrassed to say, but it was the biggest line item, so it was easy to spot.
Yeah, of course.
So and we are planning on going um, for a water rate study this
This year, yeah, right, so we don't, no longer have deficits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are you ready to make a motion on this topic?
Motion, please. Um, I move to recommend that council approve the water utility budget twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six for four hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and eighty eight dollars and thirty cents. For twenty twenty six to twenty twenty seven for four hundred and fifty nine thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and thirty one cents. And for twenty twenty seven to twenty twenty eight for four hundred and seventy thousand and ninety eight dollars and five cents.
And have a second, please. Any further discussion required? All in favor, and you now must say Karen. So we'll move on to the capital water budget.
So the capital water budget, I've uh, I assume you can still see my screen. I just have, I always like to know where the money's coming from, so I've got our we have two water reserve accounts and we have a depreciation for water utility, we're mandated by the U A R B to put whatever our depreciation is, and it's been about sixty five thousand a year, we have to move it over here. So once the audit is done, I will move, that's last year's funds over here. Um, and so where we end the year, well, we'll have about nine sixty, we'll end the year about nine twenty six because the outgoing funds is thirty two thousand and it's ten meters, ten water meters and four two inch to four inch meters for a total of thirty two thousand, that's in year one. And Ken is here, if you have any questions about that. In year two, we are going to buy ten more meters and we're possibly going to put a shed at the end of the La Keel line, so that's a twenty five thousand dollar capital expenditure for next year and the year after that, more water meters and perhaps a chlorine pump, water pump at the water tower. So.
So. Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Uh, might be a question for Ken, why are we waiting to not twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight for chlorine? Is it a replacement to the chlorine water? Down to the
Strolling water pumps?
Yeah. Is that just a replacement?
Yeah, so that that was, right now, they're they're very old, but they're operating, so just as we're projecting three years forward, this is a possible expense that I can see coming up, so in terms of the fact we have a model ahead.
Okay.
That is, there's a non-zero chance.
And we have to place them before we do.
Yeah, there's no choice, absolutely.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the capital water budget, please.
Um, I will move to recommend to council to approve the water capital budget twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six for thirty two thousand dollars. For twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven for twenty five thousand dollars and twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight for thirty five thousand dollars.
Have a second, please.
I'll second.
All, any further discussion required? All in favor?
Uh, I now must say Karen.
To allow, move on to the item four in the list, um, with us for decision, low income tax exemption.
This one is uh, Melanie's as well.
So I assume you've all had a chance to read that R F D. And we had three, three applicants, um, last year we had one, uh, two years ago we had two, um, this year we've had three, they all qualify. One is slightly over, but I prorated the amount, that's what, it's five hundred dollars is what you you're entitled to. Um, so this uh, usually this shows up, the credit goes on the final tax bill in October. And if uh, someone can't wait, they can request a check um, before that, provided their interim taxes are paid.
So that's why you're asking ahead of time?
Well, the the uh, the uh, deadline for filing was May thirty first, so we have all the applicants that we're gonna, that will be eligible this year.
But instead of waiting for the final tax bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I should also note that we'll probably redo our um, application form. We've had a little bit of discussion with um Heather and Sandy and we, we are all in consensus and we'll go over it, I'll be bringing a new application form to you sometime in the fall for you, you to go over and approve. And uh, our rates, uh, this was done, I think in twenty twenty one. Um, but uh, and the low income at the time was twenty eight thousand, but today I believe it's thirty two thousand. So we'd probably increase our um our uh, income as well, yeah.
Should we do that earlier than later?
Yeah.
For the, the year is already done here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's already in place with this year, but we can, so I'm hoping to put the policy on the agenda for September so that next fiscal year will be, it'll be ready to go.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move to recommend the council approve the lower income tax exemption for all numbers one oh seven, nine oh seven, eighty six and one oh seven, nine oh six, six, two, both at five hundred dollars. And for role number zero four, five, seven, two, three, one, nine, in the amount of four seventy six, providing the accounts are in good standing.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? You now must say Karen. So we'll now move on to the request for decision, new pension policy number twenty twenty five dash oh nine.
So this is in your agenda package because we have, we're repealing the pension by law last month, so it will come to the June council meeting for second reading. So we have to have a policy in place um, with the bylaw going out. So this is the draft new um, pension for um, everybody that qualifies. The um, in the R F D, it kind of outlines the the reasonings and and what we've changed. So don't think you have any questions on the new policy.
Just that, at council, we will be uh, it's a timing, right? We don't have to put a subject to repeal because the repeal will happen at council, is that right?
By policies.
The repeal of the bylaw will happen at council?
The bylaw, yes.
Um, so we don't need to put in a subject to repeal because it'll happen at the same just double checking.
You mean at the moment?
The policy can't go in until it's repealed, right?
Right, so the bylaw will go first and then the pension policy will come after, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So the motion doesn't say we're appealing.
No, no, it doesn't, and dead long, is there both happening the same day or repeal happens before?
Correct, yeah, thank you, so that's what we're trying to line everything up.
Right, yeah.
Any further discussion? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move to recommend to council to approve the pensions, pensions policy number two zero two five dash zero nine dated June twenty twenty five.
I'll just second it.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, if our all in favor?
I now must say.
Uh, so now we'll move on to, let it pass a lot of discussion, request for decision, repeal and replace the dog bylaw. I did read the section, barking dogs to my
To your dogs? Mine did, you listened to it. So the the idea with the dog bylaw is that our animal control contract is with the county of Annapolis and it had expired as of March first. And when I met with the staff at the county, they proposed that we all have the same bylaw so that it's easier to um, enforce. And they also are now taking the town of Middleton on as well for animal control, so Middleton is also going through the And they also are now taking the town of Middleton on as well for animal control, so Middleton is also going through the. The same process, trying to update their bylaw, all similar. Um, and I know there was lots of questions back and forth, so I'm not sure if there's. Any more questions or anything that you are looking to amend?
I do have just one question, um, the rationale behind making registration voluntary rather than mandatory.
So right now, if we have it in for yearly. Do I know if people come in and register their dog? I have no idea. So it's not like we're enforcing that. Charge, right, because I don't know who's moving in with dogs and, and if they're coming in and. And buying a, a permit or a license for them. And the county um, has, has theirs as. They have them as well voluntary, but if a dog is collected. You're not allowed to get your dog back until you purchase a tag, a license or permit, so that if the dog is lost again, they know who. Owns those, yeah, and then we've also had, um. Oh, you know, we're still working out, but having a list because of course, usually when the dogs are lost, it's not during the day when they come phone staff. To find out who owns our dogs, that we're working on a better system or. The dog tag, the note, the name of the owner and the phone number to contact them so that they can access that at any time. And the county had, in the response to some of the questions that we had, the county said. The reason theirs wasn't mandatory was because the actual costs, the outlay. Of them having to go around and essentially register everybody would cost more than what they would get back in the registration fees.
And that's the same with the towns, same thing with the town.
Yeah, I guess I'm sort of just sort of thought process, I know a little other municipalities where it is mandatory, it's. It's not only just a good tool for if animals are lost, but also for monitoring vaccinations. Um, to make sure that people are getting their dogs, like rabies vaccinations and all that kind of stuff.
We didn't have that under the fork, like we, they could just register the dog, they didn't have to have show any proof of vaccination.
Yeah, I just, I think more about sort of community safety and then potentially using, I know it's not a lot of money, but using those funds to put towards like other. Initiatives like. I don't know, the maintenance of our dog park.
Yeah, the funds don't even cover the dog tags that we have to put out every year. So like, we didn't buy, we stopped buying dog tags because they were too expensive and we only use like fifteen or twenty of them a year. So we stopped even buying the dog tags and, so they don't have a year on them anymore, we just give them a single one, yeah.
Because we have something in there about um. Them having to keep their, their tag on their collar. Securely fixed on the dog at all times, so. Um, that would definitely have to be changed, but um, we could still continue registration without a. Uh, a tag, tags actually can be quite dangerous if caught in a vent and a, and a house. So, um, definitely would be in favor of keeping a tag on or having to wear a tag, but a regi, I think a registration is worthwhile. It's good dog ownership, and in our, our town currently asks for, what was it, um. The vet, the vet name. And um, microchip implant information. Whether there's spade or not. And how many, and it allows us to keep track of family dogs are in-house. So I, I think, I think a registration is worthwhile, even though it's not.
I think a hundred percent. I think first what was it that Ashley was saying in her email, you know, enforcing registration in the county was a lot more onerous than it would be. In the town where we don't have as many dogs and it's obviously not as large as states, I don't, I'm not sure, I.
I can say that we have dog registration tags. And I cannot remember, but I'm not downstairs, the last time someone registered their dog. Melanie, would you know?
Well, I don't, I locked the vault, but I was just thinking, I wish I hadn't because uh, it would show us the last time. Um, we keep it in a big log and we have the phone number, they do get a dog tag, we just didn't buy new ones anymore. We have a, a bag of dog tags that when they come, we give them a dog tag, the tag number, we, we know the name of the dog, the owner and the phone number. Um, and perhaps that's something we should give to the county or. Whoever's enforcing the dog bylaw, so that if it is one of our dogs, they can know that, like. If it's after hours, if it's during the hours, we can easily give that to them, but it's in a, an old ledger that would be.
You're still using the old ledger?
We're still using that ledger, yeah, we still use it, so.
No, we have a document now that we're putting all share points, so that we, that we can share it with the county, so. If we get a new dog in, then it will just, the information will go there and they'll have it automatically when they open up. Good share point, so, but.
So can I just, I, I wanted to, I'd have something clarified, so if they pick up a dog in the town of Annapolis Royal. And it goes to the pound, which is just outside of town, um, if an, oh, the owner from the town. Goes to collect the dog, is a town owner required to register their dog before they get it back?
Correct.
So that would be the same as it is for the county, they would, they would have to register before they could collect their animal.
So one of the discrepancies is, um, in Ashley's email, she was saying that if a dog is impounded. Uh, she makes several attempts and I was really impressed with her email of how much care she takes. Definitely the staff do care, um, however, in the bylaw, it doesn't reflect that. It says, um, any dog which is, um, I'm sorry. It says if a tag or electronic identified device is found, municipal staff shall make at least one attempt to contact an owner. So, and I know that in our bylaw, we have written three attempts. So I think ours is a little more humane, although I know their actions are humane. I think that needs to be reflected in their bylaw. Because staff change.
Yeah, so, let's not confuse their bylaw and our bylaw.
Okay.
Right, so they enforce their bylaw.
Right.
They're enforcing our bylaw, not their bylaw, our bylaw, but we're not. We're changing our bylaw to match their bylaw. If you want to change our bylaw to have three calls, then we change our bylaw to that.
Our, that's what our bylaw is.
No, our bylaw is gone.
Oh, it's gone, yeah.
That's, we're repealing or replacing.
Place it with.
With this new bylaw. So if you want the three calls in our bylaw, we can do that and we'll tell them. That we did not agree to the one phone call, we want three.
Yeah.
But it's still our bylaw, which they wanted all, one bylaw for the three municipal units. And then, if ours, if we say no, we want you to make three different phone calls, then they would have to make three different phone calls. If they're okay with that, when they signed the contract for the animal control. Right, so we can put whatever we want in our bylaw. But they also have to agree, they have to also agree that they are willing to do those extra steps for us. Because it would be different than the other two, but that's faulting, like we can see if that's fine with them.
And they might amend their own bylaw.
That's what I was thinking.
For the reasons that, that you're.
More in line with ours.
Yeah, ours take responsibility for the extra calls, that's another option.
Well, no, because the animal control is on that and we're not gonna split.
We wouldn't know that they had a dog in, in place.
Well, yeah, they usually, and, and I can't even remember when the last time was they had. One of our animals that they picked up.
I remember. Razor, well. But I, I tend to agree with you, Lynn, I would, I would feel more comfortable with this. With a change like that, it's a small change, but it does exactly what Lynn was describing, was it, which is that it sign. It signals to our community at large. That we have kind of a, a humane approach and a compassionate approach. Because I, I think that if anybody, anybody reading this, you got one chance. And if you miss that call, or don't know that, you know, don't know who's called or whatever, um, that feels just a little too one and done.
And that's why I had to reach out to Ashley, because I, I don't know what they do.
Yeah.
Right, like, I, we have the contract with them, once the contract's signed, they come and do their thing and they enforce our bylaw.
Three calls seems reasonable, especially because the dog remains in their possession for at least three days. So seventy two hours, so if they, if the dog is remaining at the, at the pound for three days. Then three calls seems perfect, seems like.
Or emails or whatever contacts on file, because a lot of people don't answer their phone.
They don't know.
They don't know the phone number.
Yeah.
I, I just, I can make one comment about penalties, so, um. Not more than a thousand dollars for first offense, not more than a thousand for the second, not more than a thousand for the third. Are, do we have any control over what our fines would be for our town? I would say that your fine should increase. With each call, with each issue.
But it does increase to three hundred.
Or hundred and.
Yeah.
Hundred or three.
But never more than a thousand dollars. And I don't think we have.
We're probably.
And how would he, I, I'm curious as to how that would be determined, so if they, it says not less than two hundred dollars and not more than a thousand for a first offense. Who decides where between two hundred and a thousand?
They do.
At once, they do, yeah.
Because they're the um, bylaw officers.
Do we know how that decision is reached?
We've never charged anybody, so, nope. That would be another question I'd have to send off to.
Because it does, I, I, it just, I, I'm curious because I, I like, how, how would you?
I would imagine it depends what the offense is, if it was a fierce dog that bit somebody.
And then it's a thousand dollars.
Right, so if they, yeah. Not in control, if the, you know, there's many different. Outlined in the thing, like if it's a barking dog or. There's many different levels of. Um, why they would be picked up or.
Yeah, attacked your injured person, attacked or injured a domestic animal, fails to comply with the notice to muzzle. Not in control of.
Only, um, since I've been the C A O.
There's been one muzzle.
Muzzle dog that was mandated it, if they left their. Um, house, they had to have a muzzle on because of. An incident that's happened, a number of incidents, so they never find them, they just did the muzzle.
Actually, her, her email was quite impressive, the care that she took and they kept the dog for several months until. Yeah, so, they did a great, they do a great job, my worry is Ashley may not be there. You know, next year, it could be somebody else, and all the same, so it should be reflected in the bylaw, they're, they're great practices.
So. So we're looking to move the one to three calls?
Move from one call to three calls?
Contacts, should I say?
Alright, so I think that's a, just a small, like it's not a big change to the bylaw, so I think we can still move forward with the first reading of the bylaw. And we'll have the um, change at the council meeting with the.
The July.
Yes, and I will send it out to um, the county to make sure that that is a fine change.
Yeah. And then I can imagine it. Yeah, so not given all they do anyways.
Alright, so can I have a motion, please?
Well, we to recommend to council to approve the first reading of the repeal and replace dog bylaw. Number two oh six, dated June twenty twenty five, with the inclusion of three contacts. Prior to any decision to destroy, destroy an animal.
I have a second or?
My second now.
Any further discussion?
I have one more question. Have there ever been any, I know some municipalities also do this, but um, any limits to the number of animals? In residence?
We have not, and none that I know of, yeah.
So are we ready, I don't say are we ready for the vote, I know that's bad, um, all in favor?
One is to recommend to council to set the date for second reading on July sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Can I have a second or please? I'll second. All in favor? Heather, did you vote, ah, yeah, okay. You know, mostly carried on both counts, then, then our final topic of the new business is memorandum of understanding with the Annapolis Valley Regional Library.
And I think Melanie is just.
Yeah.
Ready.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
How many Innovation Lab Association?
I know, I had to go to a different one, it wouldn't.
Go back to the top, yeah. So, yeah, so in your agenda package, we have a request for decision. Unfortunately, the Academy Innovation Lab Association has decided to uh. Fold, and so they had brought it up to the A V R L and our attention, and we met with them. Looking to move forward with a new memorandum of understanding with the two um, units, the. Naples Royal, or Naples Valley Regional Library Board and the town. And so we met and we have come up with this M L U. The um, president of the association and Julia from A V R L are coming and doing a presentation. At our June council meeting, so. They'll give you kind of like the background of what the Innovation Lab has been doing. The passing over to the library and then we'll have the memorandum of understanding. Um, ready if you approve or um, agree with this one to wrap up at that June meeting as well, so. They'll do their presentation and then we'll have the memorandum for um, consideration.
Can I say why they were standing?
Primarily, it's just, it's a lack of volunteer, you know, kind of commitment, really. Everybody's happy and, and, you know, thrilled with the, the Innovation Lab itself. But I think as an organization, they about that the library, A V R L was in a better position. To maintain a stronger kind of innovation lab space than they could as a small volunteer group. And it has always been a very small volunteer group, and so they, they've done kind of yeoman's work for many years trying to. To keep things, you know, moving forward, and I think they just reached a point where. They'd all done as much as they really can, so. Yeah, there's no, there's no big negativity around, it is just more, you know, that it's, it's kind of reached its natural. End and then the library, which, just to add, the library already had kind of this maker's space. Programming that's, that's baked into A V R L, and so there was a, there is a natural. Giant, so if you look at the M O U that's in our package, that's a, a natural fit with everything that they've, they're already doing in these other. Spaces where they have that.
And ours.
And they.
And ours. And they rotate through all the maker spaces, so they, they have been coming to our site in certain days.
Yeah, so it's, this isn't a brand new exposure to them to this facility, and it, it does create an opportunity. Um, we have a pretty exceptional facility, just in general, but we have a really nice innovation lab. And so it does create an opportunity for it to be um, even more strongly supported.
Yeah, I know in the past, they've had even summer students that have been in there, um, supporting people, using the equipment.
I believe they have two maker's space summer students this year again, and they'll have people rotating through again on the not scheduled.
We're ready to make a motion?
I can make, I'll go, you go ahead.
Oh, sure, I move to recommend to council to approve the memorandum of understanding. M O U with the town of Annapolis Royal and Annapolis Valley Regional Library to establish and operate an innovation lab slash maker's space.
And I'll second that. Further discussion?
Yes, there's a not standing agreement between A V R L and the town. And I would be concerned with um. Uh, getting into an agreement until there being further discussions about how that is handled. So it's just, we have a pre-existing agreement with A V R L, we would be perpetuating, you know, the agreement. I'm in favor of the uh. We would be perpetuating, you know, the agreement, I'm in favor of the uh, innovation lab. But I would like it to be on terms that are.
But we already have an M O U with them for the innovation lab.
Yes, we do, but this is a new agreement and we have a previous agreement with A B R L. That's my concern, I'm on the condo board, we have twenty-two percent, over twenty-two percent interest in the condo board. And that's all tied up with this, so I'm just saying that there is an agreement now between the town and A B R L.
There's actually two is what I'm trying to say, cause there's an existing M O U related to the innovation lab. That's separate from the M O U that you're talking about already.
Saying that is my position.
So, you, you're concerned that if we sign this, we're weakening the position to negotiate.
That is what I'm saying.
But this is also then going to stop the.
Innovation.
Innovation lab until the other. Um, this resolved agreement, because the other one is an agreement, is resolved. Right, so this one, if it doesn't go through, then I'm assuming that everything will halt up there.
Yeah, I actually saw this one as. A good stepping to stone towards building a stronger and healthier relationship with them, because I thought this was a really well put together. M O U, it's very clear, very concise, very straightforward, and so I thought. To me, it looked like a very positive step towards the, the relationship with A B R L. And I would hate to see the innovation one just cease.
I wouldn't like it to cease either, but I'm concerned about increasing responsibilities for the town.
Yeah, I guess I, I would only say I see the responsibilities as the same. From our existing M O U regarding the innovation lab to what they are in this, this one, what's removed is the Innovation Lab Association.
So are you suggesting, are you, are you wanting to hold off then or?
I would like to see the innovation lab lose. I'd be fine with an interim agreement of some sort, if it was interim until something is done. And I'm just saying that it's more responsibility for the town when there are things that are unclear from the previous agreement.
We did do this one for only a two years, um, because of the funding formula not being. Unresolved for all of the libraries, so this one was just until twenty twenty-seven.
So you're saying that it wouldn't prejudice any negotiations we have in respect to the other agreement?
I don't feel it would, um, I feel that we've been meeting regularly and keeping communications open.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that. It's, yeah.
So I would be okay with it as long as that's communicated to the board, that there are unresolved issues, I'd be fine with that.
You wanna give us a motion then?
Well, but can she, cause we already have a motion on floor that's been moved and seconded? So we were just in discussion.
No, we didn't, we started a little discussion, we haven't made a motion.
We can't.
Immediately Heather moved that and I've seconded it.
Alright.
So they either agree with it or defeat it.
Yeah. So.
We'd have to call for a vote, cause we've just had the discussion, so we have to vote on.
Right, uh, um, any further discussion then? And all in favor?
Alright.
Questions to be.
Motionist.
Um, I'm willing to make a motion to recommend to council to approve the memorandum of understanding. With the town of Annapolis Royal and Annapolis Valley Li- uh, Regional Library to establish and operate an innovation lab maker space. And I would add, um. This, uh, without prejudice to any discussions that the town and A B R L would have. With respect to their existing relationship.
Second that. All in favor?
One name.
Uh, so we will move on to emotional business, the next council public engagement.
So I just put that on there because I have three months, uh, whatever you guys are calling it now.
Coffee and cookies with Kim.
Um, is coming up uh, for either June or July, um, so I didn't know if you wanted to have one. In the summer, if you were looking to continue having them, just kind of putting it on the table for you to discuss.
I sort of wonder, I don't know, every meeting that I'm trying to run right now, nobody shows up. So perhaps the best thing would be to do something in September when people are ready to be back and so I'm back having. Discussions and things and I don't know what other people think, but you know, I had to cancel two meetings this week, cause I couldn't get, you know, people to. Show up.
I think the weather's getting a little too nice after a really rough spring, so I agree.
I tend to agree too, yeah.
But after reading the climate change survey stuff where people say they don't know what's going on. I'm thinking the very least, we should do something on the shoreline, but that's just.
I'm a little.
Shoreline will have one anyways.
Then that would cover it for me.
Is that in the contract?
That would be fine for me, cause I think that's the one that they need to, you know, show up to or not show up to.
Yeah, I think that coffee with council, to, to my mind anyways, doesn't, doesn't preclude regular public. Consultation for any specific projects that we're doing, it's not the same. Kind of thing, it's, it's a, it's giving people an opportunity to come in and, yeah, it's kind of a bonus. It's giving people an opportunity to come in and discuss all of the things.
Anything that they want to discuss.
Yeah, but it doesn't go to a single, meet a single public consultation requirement.
So we'll put it back on the agenda in September.
Sounds, sounds good. Um, so correspondence, the community climate capacity survey report, did everyone have a question? A chance to look at that?
I just find shocking after twelve months of talking about shoreline and grants and all the money coming in. Nobody knows about it, but I guess the breakdown didn't give us for the town, so. You know, it was aggregate, so.
Yeah, it's interesting results, certain ones, um, interesting to look at the distribution of people who. Are more interested versus less interested, many reflect the time people have to complete surveys as well, but.
The age, the age, the demographic to me was, uh, it felt a little sad actually. Like I want, it immediately struck me as we have work to do there about finding ways to get it in some of. The younger people in our communities, not just the town of Annapolis Royal, but obviously in, in. Like getting it into the school somehow and getting younger people participating and.
Perhaps if they have an environmental uh, club.
Yeah.
The school, they might be interested in.
So we have done a bit of outreach regarding that actually to the school and that they're super eager, they actually have cool classes that are set up to study all of this and. Are eager to hear more about the shoreline project, are eager to, um. They will now be working with Clean, the Clean does educational programs and as far as we know, we put them together, Clean will be. Working and we did ask if there would be any interest in some participation in environmental advisory, but we haven't. Heard anything, mind you, I know it's very busy time, but.
Alright, that's good to hear, is that, that one, that one person in eighteen to twenty-four just kind of hit me go, oh.
You have to think back again, you're concerned with when we were eighteen years old.
Oh, true.
It shouldn't be climate change for them, but it is, but it's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, maybe they are not. Where they access opportunities to be feedback may not be where this was.
Yeah, exactly.
Community climate, climate capacity survey, so I have any comments on that or need for discussion? So we will now go in camera under section twenty-two-two in municipal full governance act. To um, to discuss four contract negotiation issues and to um. Discuss a topic related to the um, buying.